Call to order the Douglas zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, May 5th, at 7:14 PM.
Roll call though.
Yep.
Nine ten.
Tonight's meeting, we have myself, Mr. Holland, Mr. Forget, and Mr. Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Bombara is joining us through Zoom, and Mr. Tassino has an unexcused absence. So, the first agenda item is a public hearing for Joseph Bylinski, case number 2021-04, 103 Shore Road. It was, the public hearing was advertised in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, and posted at the Town Hall, and reads as follows. The Town of Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, May 5th, 2021, at the Douglas Municipal Center Community Meeting Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass., to hear the application of Joseph Bylinski. The applicant is appealing a decision pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 8, Appeals, and the Douglas zoning bylaws by the Building Commissioners refusal to enforce the zoning bylaws by ordering the demolition and removal of a partially constructed dwelling at 103 Shore Road. The building permit initially issued was revoked because the law has substantially less frontage in area than is required in an RA zoning district. The property is located at 103 Shore Road, map 300, parcel 18. A copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street. During regular business hours, any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated. Is Mr. Bylinski, or his representative here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Henry Lang on behalf of Mr. Bylinski.
You're welcome to sit there if you'd like, Henry. You can stand, whatever you prefer.
You can be the judge, I'll stand.
Okay.
This is probably the fifth, maybe the sixth time we've been here on this matter, so I'm sure you're all very familiar with the facts, but I will summarize them. Nevertheless, this initially started about 12 years ago, when apparently a former building inspector improvidently issued a building permit for a significantly undersized lot for reasons that are still unclear, but she's no longer with us, so we can't ask her. Now, that building permit, as you indicated, was revoked shortly after it was granted, and that revocation was upheld by the Superior Court. So that is a final determination that this was in fact an illegal building permit. Since that time, we've spent a number of frustrating years trying to get that illegal building removed, but unfortunately, because of apparently some recalcitrance by your appointing authority, that has not been accomplished. And if I was a cynical person, I would suspect that there are less than honorable reasons for the town's refusal to enforce the order that this board issued some years ago, but I'll let the public speculate as to what those reasons might be at this point. Nevertheless, this board, as you recall, has already ordered that this building be removed. That was appealed, the appeal was dismissed, so your order still is in force in effect, but for reasons that I can't tell you, I really understand, the Massachusetts Appeals Court has decided that if we want to get enforcement, we have to come back. So, we are coming back. In accordance with the Appeals Court's order, we asked the building inspector to order the building removed. The building inspector refused to do that, and I can't say I, you know, I disagree with the fact that he's basically saying he very ordered it just removed once, so ordering it again probably won't change things, but I would have liked it if he had in fact done his job and issued the order requiring the building to be removed, and followed up with that order with whatever actions necessary to see that it's enforced. But apparently, the building inspector, for as they say, has decided he's not going to do that, which leaves us with the remedy again to ask this board to overrule the building inspector a second time, admittedly a different building inspector. We're now, I guess, on our third one to deal with this issue, but we're asking that you once again overrule the building inspector, issue an order that the building be removed, and since the last time you did that, the person in question decided to ignore your order, I thought maybe perhaps this time around, you could put a little more teeth into it. So, it occurred to me that under the statute, you basically have the authority of the building inspector in your role on appeal, and I think the building inspector has the authority to issue fines. So it occurs to me that perhaps to make this thing move a little bit, and to see that your orders are in fact worth something, other than the piece of paper they're written on, we could, in addition to overruling the building inspector and ordering the building removed, to also impose a fine, and I would suggest something under the order of $300 a day until it's removed, and the theory that the property owner has seemed fit to ignore this board and the bylaws for about 12 years now. It seems like he's gotten a free ride for a significant period of time, so maybe it's time to impose some teeth to perhaps overcome his recalcitrance to this point. In addition, there was some discussion in the Appeals Court's decision concerning the authority's ability to enforce the order itself. As I read the statute, the CBA does in fact have authority to enforce the bylaw, and I would suggest that the last time around, there was some sort of inconclusive language about Mr. Bylinski's right to enforce your order, and the Appeals Court said it really wasn't a clear delegation of authority. So I think maybe this time around, we remedy that by specifically saying that you're authorizing Mr. Bylinski on behalf of the board to enforce its order. I think that comes within this board's authority and within the statutory framework. So, three things I'm asking. Explicitly overrule the building inspector's refusal to enforce an order, the building demolished a second time. Impose fines of $300 a day until the building is in fact removed, and at your point, Mr. Bylinski, basically authorize Mr. Bylinski expressly to enforce the order on behalf of the zoning board. I think if those three things are done, we may actually get that building removed in our lifetime.
Okay. Does any board members have any questions for, is there any, like Sean?
Do you have a copy of the appeals order that you're talking about? It's not part of the application.
I have it here.
Is it just the one?
It's 22 pages long.
Okay.
Want to read it?
Well, I don't want to bore to death everybody here. I was just curious, but it's not part of the application for some.
I did not submit it as part of the application, but I do have it.
If I can, so essentially, this board has already acted on this exact same request back in November 2014. There's a limitation to this board's authority and also the Building Commissioner's authority. Enforcement is discretionary, however, you reach a point where if you do decide that you want to order that the building comes down, the decision-making level moves on to the Board of Selectmen, and in this case, because given the lengthy litigation history here, you might need to, a town meeting authorization or appropriation to increase your attorney's fees, because you're in for a long haul if you wanted to pursue this on your own. As you can see here, we've been in court for 12 years on this thing, and wouldn't surprise me if we'd spend another 12 if we decided to become the plaintiff that tries to cede to the demolition of the, to the building. As far as the imposition of fine, there's a provision in the building code that allows for fines, but at the end of the day, all you can do is write it down on a piece of paper, and then eventually, in order to collect, I assume in this case, we'd end up having to file suit, so that takes us down, it takes us right back to the original issue. Does the town want to spend a lot of money pursuing what is essentially a war between two neighbors that don't like each other? In the third, appointing Bylinski to basically stand in town council instead or represent the zoning board of appeals, that, this board doesn't have that kind of authority. The appointment of a town council or the authorization of lawsuit would have to be done through, to the Board of Selectmen. I just, I'm not quite sure what the purpose of the request is tonight. There was an admission by Bylinski in front of the Appeals Court that this board has already acted in November 2014 by ordering the demolition of the property, and the Appeals Court, in that decision that we were talking about, has said, the zoning board has done every single thing within its power to cede to the removal of the property, to the removal of the building from the property. So, I think this is just trying to basically reset the clock. I assume an appeal would follow if you say no, and I assume appeal from Mr. Tassino would follow if you say yes regarding a secondary order, but essentially, you've already acted and you've already exerted or exercised all of your authority here when you ordered the building down in November 2014. So I'm not quite sure where we're going with this, but there's a request before the board, so you have to act on it, but if anybody has any questions, obviously, you know, I'd be moving happy to answer them.
Mike, I got an email this afternoon from your office, and seems both of these parties are headed to court next month. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, so we have essentially this, this exact issue. They amended their complaint, and they filed a third motion for summary judgment, which raised the same issues the first two times, and that is whether or not Bylinski can compel or Bylinski can ask for an order compelling the town to sue Tassino to bring the house, to bring the house down. We've received numerous, numerous decisions that acknowledge the case law, and that is no, the authority to sue is vested in town meeting and through the Board of Selectmen. So, we have summary judgment hearing, I believe on June 24th, which will revisit this issue for, I think, the third time, maybe the fourth time, and I'm hoping disposes of this case altogether, and just, and just ends this 12-year saga that we are still dealing with. However, tonight's decision might set the clock where all of a sudden, we're going to have an appeal, and we're in court on a, you know, another action, appealing tonight's decision. Either way that you go, my hope is, we argue this case June 24th, we get a decision, we've already been told that Bylinski will likely appeal, but that, that was my hope, that we were getting close to the finish line through that third motion for summary judgment. But tonight creates perhaps more procedural issues and further reason to just go to court to argue essentially the same issue that we've been arguing for almost 12 years now.
If the board took no action, seeing it's going to court next month with that, would that be prudent?
Well, I mean, you don't, you don't have to act on the petition tonight. You have, you know, you have your statutory response period. I mean, I think when we had a discussion with Judge Foster today, he had put it down originally for early June, and then kind of extended it out to late June, expecting a decision on this petition tonight, so that he could at least have that in the record. So, I think in order to stay in the court's good graces, we probably should act on it either way, rather than just sit on this. I don't think the court would look favorably at that.
What's the date of next month that they're going?
Our hearing's June 24th.
Yeah, so, the 100 days is July, is July 1st, so it wouldn't make much sense to wait until next month, because it would still be before you go to court.
Right.
And it would expire before the following month.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Ken, would you, do you have something you'd like to add to this?
Just the orders were issued, they have copies of the issued orders, and for me to reissue the orders again, following the guidance of the zoning board and the selectmen of the town.
Okay.
I mean, it's just repetitive to reissue the same orders.
So your position is there's already an order in place, and?
Already a standing order in place for the building to be removed.
Okay. All right.
And unfortunately, the building inspector is refusing to enforce that order, and that's the frustration. You know, I appreciate what Mr. Keneffek has to say. The fact of the matter is, this has been prolonged by about eight years because the town has refused to enforce the order and the law, and it can complain about its legal fees and expenses all it wants. The only reason the town hasn't incurred any fees is because it refuses to issue the order. If any, if any step along this process, the town attorney had just said, yes, the town agrees the building should come down, it would have been down years ago, but the Board of Selectmen, as they say, for whatever political reasons there may be, refuses to say yes. Furthermore, when I asked the town's administrator for the legal fees related to its litigation over the last couple of years, the result is zero. It hasn't cost the town a nickel to refuse to enforce or refuse to enforce this. So the financial argument is nonsense, frankly. It's, you know, it's a fig leaf. It's not costing the town anything, and furthermore, I specifically told the town, we would enforce it at no cost to the town, but they refuse to accept that offer. So it's not expense, they're exercising allegedly their discretion to protect the political crony, apparently, and that's all I can suspect. There's no legal reason, there's no financial reason, there is no reason to prolong this except politics, pure and simple. Apparently, we have one set of rules for certain people and another set of rules for other people. Let me give you an example. How much time and energy has this board and the town attorney at the town's expense spent arguing about a shed? That was a little bit over the program line.
Excuse me, Ken.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
I don't want to talk about another case.
Yeah, okay.
And, sorry to interrupt you, Henry, but if I understood the attorney correctly, we've exercised all our rights that we have to this point. We don't have the authority to order that house torn down, that falls onto the selectmen. We don't have the authority to tell the Building Commissioner to issue fines, that doesn't fall under our jurisdiction unless I misunderstood what he said. I'm just unsure what, what we could do further at this point. I think that.
For the.
I think, I think that his argument goes, just by what you just recently said, goes back to the selectmen, that's where you should be, not in front of us.
Mike Keneff, did you have something?
What it, what, yeah, so what, you do have the order, you have the ability to order that the house be taken down. It's essentially, it's not, you know, some sort of decree that Tassino would have to abide by. He could just say no. So if you order it down, if you order it down, the secondary step is you end up having to sue him, and then you're dealing with all of these endless appeals, and you know, we've already spent 12 years at this now, and I don't know if there's an appetite to initiate that kind of an issue, initiate that kind of litigation, and then just be mired down in another dozen years of litigation, and, you know, I don't agree that it would be free to the town if we were to prosecute. Right now, we're kind of mired down in having to defend this case, and we continue to see the light at the end of the tunnel, but they continue to appeal and raise other issues, and it just, we're just like in this spiral litigation where we think we're almost out, and we just keep getting sucked back in, but I don't think there's a lot of appetite to be on the prosecution, you know, prosecuting the case, which is, which boils down to, you know, a war between two neighbors that just don't get along with each other. So, that's, that's the big thing. You can order that the house be taken down, but only a judge can force somebody to take the house down. And then, even then, if he decides that he's not going to take the house down, and you get a judgment saying, hey, take the house down, you might end up having to look at an appropriation with the town actually going in and taking the house down. Now taxpayers are spending even more money on that. I mean, you can attach the property, but the property's not developable, it's too small, are you ever going to recover that, recover the cost there? I mean, we've had these cases where towns have taken them down, and it's a tremendous expense, and sometimes they just don't recover the, what they spend. So I just wanted to kind of make that clear. You know, you can say take it down, but only a judge can, can force or allow it to be taken down.
Ken, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Reading their application, the, oh, actually, I'm reading the advertisement in the paper. So, they're appealing the decision of the Building Commissioners refusal to enforce the zoning bylaw by ordering the demolition and removal of the dwelling. So basically, all we're hearing is whether or not we want to tell the Building Commissioner to issue another demolition order, because we're, we're not being asked to order the house taken down, we're, we're being asked to, to hear the appeal on the denial of a second request, or I don't know how many requests, but a second order to demolish this house. So basically, we're either going to tell the Building Commissioner to issue another order or not, correct?
No, that's not correct.
I'm asking.
Yeah, the process is, if you, if you seek zoning enforcement, you're a resident of the town or a property owner, you approach the Building Commissioner first and say, listen, there's an issue, a zoning violation over here at this property. Then the Building Commissioner ends up making a decision whether or not he wants to pursue the, well, number one, if there's a violation at all, and then, number two, if he wants to, you know, he wants to do anything to enforce the violation or remedy the violation. If he fails to act, then there's an appeal to this board, and then they can overturn the, the decision of the Building Commissioner. Now, in this case, it's, you can't see that the Building Commissioner refused the zoning enforcement request. If you look at the letter, and I think you probably have it in front of you, all he did is he wrote back saying, listen, I know you're, you're asking for zoning enforcement, but you've already received an order, and there's nothing further that I, that I can do. So, there wasn't really a refusal to act, it was, hey, listen, we've already acted, and you already have an issue, an order issued by the town saying, take the house down. So, it wasn't like he was saying no, and he, you know, turned a blind eye to the issue, he's just saying, you know, hey, I don't understand why you're asking me to do the same thing that we've already acted on.
Go ahead. I'll pose a question to, it's Mike, I apologize, Mike, I don't remember your last name.
Yeah, yeah.
My recollection, which could be flawed and could be faulty, was that a long, years ago, probably at this point, there was a representation made by council that the decision made by any court did not place any economic burden on the town of Douglas in terms of causing it, having an obligation to tear down anything or expend any funds to tear down anything. Am I wrong about that?
I did, I think you're referring to our legal argument, which we've been making since, I think, almost 2009 at this point. We cannot be compelled by a court to sue GBI to take the house down. That would have to be a decision made solely by the town. No, no court can order us to sue somebody. Which is where, kind of where we stand. The town has done everything, it's issued as many orders it can. The only thing the town hasn't done is sue GBI, but, you know, understandably, you're looking at probably another dozen years of litigation if they decide to go down that road.
Okay, anybody else? Is anybody in the room that wants, that could comment on this case? Attorney Shugru?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Gerald Shugru, attorney for Tassino. I was at, in that conference call today with Mike and also Henry, in which the judge said, he put it over to the 22nd of July, June, I'm sorry, but in any event, the essence of that is that the Appeals Court has basically said to them, you know, in addition to coming to that court again, they went back to the District Court in Oxbridge and asked for relief there. That took place about a month ago. The District Court of Oxbridge denied him any further relief in that court, mainly because of, you know, there was a steel request at that time because they had issued a judgment a long time ago. So essentially, we, we're going around the circle again and again, and I think it all comes down to what your bylaw says for enforcement, and your enforcement ultimately lies with the selectmen, and the selectmen have voted a number of times not to proceed with this. And why have they done that? I think you've got to look at the history of this, some of the history, none of you were involved, I wasn't involved, and Henry wasn't involved. You've got 105 Shore Road and 103 Shore Road. 105 Shore Road came before this board, and before coming before this board, they went to my client and said to him, look, if you don't object to my rebuilding of this house, I won't object when you want to do anything with your property. My guy foolishly said, yeah, okay, he had nothing in writing, and that's what happened. They went in, got their permit, tore down the house, built the same house that you see on our lot, on a smaller lot than our lot, and did it, and had it. So now the time comes, and my guy goes in and says, hey, I'm going to build, now give me the same thing. The board at that time said, you don't have to be there, we've got opinion from town council that says you don't need this. There's a letter, somewhere, it's probably been before you bought at some, at some point, and so they immediately, okay, we'll go, they go to the building inspector, gives them, the building inspector at that time gives them the permit, goes and starts building, and then this, this neighbor then applies for, stop the permit, you can't, you don't, you don't have the proper zoning, exact zoning as there is at that lot. So, it continues, and all of us know here that once you start construction, you've got to continue on, you've got to get it done within a year, so it proceeded on. Probably everything, a lot was done except for a septic system, there's no septic system there. But in any event, then, then, again, they filed to the building inspector and say, stop it, you can't do it, and it goes back to the board, the board doesn't make a decision, that decision gets appealed, and that's the basis for the first Superior Court ruling that stopped this whole thing and said, stop the building of that. So that, that's the background of why we're here, and it's not that, you know, we've never had the right to build there, we had the right to build there, we built most of this house, and then the litigation started, and here we go again. But you've got to go back to your bylaw that says town, town selectmen enforce the bylaws ultimately in this town. That's your bylaw. You want to change it, change your bylaw, but that's what you're here for.
Thank you. All right.
And just one other thing, I guess, worth mentioning, because, yes, there was an offer, and generally, usually a discreet thing just between council and, yes, there was an offer that Mr. Bylinski could take over and prosecute, and action against Mr. Tassino's on the town's behalf. However, there was no appetite in essentially handing off legal representation to a resident of town who obviously has, you know, a personal stake in a case. So that's, I think, one of the major reasons that they, they really had no interest in trying to go down that road, they didn't really feel comfortable with Mr. Bylinski essentially making legal decisions on behalf of the town.
Okay. It's the board's pleasure. It's the board's pleasure. Does the board want to make a decision tonight? Is that?
Well, I think we need to, no.
Okay.
Under Mr. Fitzpatrick's reasoning, mathematical reasoning.
Well, before they go to court, you would have to do something tonight.
Right.
If that was the reason why.
I don't know. Coming in, can I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Coming in on the, kind of the end of this, after the explanation by Mr. Shugru, that the selectmen are the enforcers of the zoning laws, and this, by reading it or hearing it right, that it's just their decision rather than everybody else that's involved.
Well, this board voted years ago for it to be, for it to be, to take away the building permit and then for it to be taken down. And then it went to court, the court, yeah, basically backed us, saying demolish it. However, that never happened and I guess we've gone as far as we can go as a board.
It was even appealed to us in 2018 and we denied it.
Yeah, right. So.
So I think it's in the selectmen's purview now, right?
Yeah, there's nothing, we can't tear it down.
No, nothing we can do.
So what they're asking for is for us to deal with the, with the, the building inspector has said he's not going to issue another, another order because there's already one in place to demolish it. So they're asking him to basically do it again. But he doesn't feel it's necessary, there's one already in place.
Hmm.
So, I mean, I think it's, personally, it's an issue that's in the courts and maybe Mr. Lane needs to go in front of the board of selectmen. I don't know, I don't think there's anything else we can do.
Right.
Dan, the orders don't expire?
I don't know if that's the case.
Mike?
No, it doesn't expire and it's been raised and we've discussed it several times in court. You know, the judge, you know, considers it, you know, an active order at this point. It continues to be an active order.
All right. I see no reason to issue a second order and I would think that their direction would be to go to the selectmen, not to us.
Actually, I move to close the public hearing?
Sure.
Sean Holland, sorry.
We have a motion by Mr. Holland to close the public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Dan Heaney?
Aye, Sean Holland.
Aye, Ron Fojt.
You're next, John.
Hi, John LaBrosse.
Hi, Mike Fitzpatrick.
Okay, so the public hearing is closed. Now we need a motion on their request, and their request is they are appealing the decision of the building inspector to not issue another order.
So I would move, unless there's further discussion?
No, I don't.
I would move that we uphold the letter of the building inspector dated February 23rd, 2021?
No. Is that the way to do it? Because it has to be in a positive manner, so.
Right. And I guess that would be, saying?
I thought that was positive.
Is that correct, Mike?
I kind of, I couldn't hear, I think that was Sean, the one that made the order.
Yeah, Sean wants to uphold the order?
Or the letter?
Of the letter that was issued in 2014?
No, February 23rd, 2021.
Oh, 2021, oh, okay.
Yeah, I think that would be fine. I mean, it's an appeal of that written decision. So I think that's fine as far as the motion.
Okay. Second.
Could I make a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
What does that do? What are you doing here now?
If anybody knows that secret answer, that'd be good.
I'm saying that we should uphold this letter, we should uphold the findings of the building inspector in that letter.
So the decision would essentially reiterate the letter from the building commissioner?
Correct.
You know, I could put a decision together and, how often do you meet? Is it every two weeks or every month?
No, once a month.
Once a month.
The first Wednesday of each month.
Oh, okay. So in the meantime, I can put a letter together, or, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, we haven't finished voting yet.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yep, no problem.
I'm going to vote against that.
No, I just, I couldn't hear you for a second. I apologize. I don't know, some reason I couldn't get on the Zoom.
No, that's okay.
Could you just repeat what you said?
Yeah, so we just made a motion to, Sean made a motion to uphold the letter by the building commissioner and I put in a second. So we haven't voted as of yet. Ronnie was just looking at the letter to make sure it was clear.
Yes. It's still not clear to me.
Well, Ronnie's still not clear.
What this is doing. What are we doing here?
Mr. Lane and his client asked the building inspector to issue another enforcement to demolish and remove the partially built building.
Yeah.
Which he's already, has already been done.
Okay.
So they're asking him to do it again. And he's saying, go ahead, Mike.
I think essentially what the motion is, is you're, and it's kind of nuanced because we've already run through this exercise before, but I think essentially the appeal is denied and you're referred back to the decision 2014, which is what the building, Mr. Fraser's letter said, you know, I'm not going to act because, you know, you already have an order in hand. So, I mean, I think I could put a decision together that kind of says that. But essentially, I guess the appeal would be denied because the relief has already been granted.
Yeah, Ronnie's just wanting to understand what we're.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to put together.
No, believe me, this is not a typical situation. You don't see these very often, if ever.
I'm sorry, I can't follow it. I just, what am I missing?
So there was a demolition order issued in 2014.
Yeah.
The applicant came in to the building commissioner and asked him to issue a second letter. And he refused because there's already one standing and it doesn't expire, so it's a valid request.
Okay.
So they appealed to us to see if we would overturn his opinion and have him issue a second demolition order. But there's already one in place. So now there's a motion on the table to uphold his decision that he's not going to issue a second letter because there is one in place already.
Oh, okay, so that's, you're not going, that's it. You're not going to issue another letter because there's already?
There's already one there.
We should say that denying the appeal.
I apologize, I saw men my, so I would, no, 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 no.
It's not typical.
So I guess I would withdraw my first motion. I'd say that I move that the board deny the appeal of the, is it Mr. or Mrs. Balinski?
Yes. It's Balinski.
It is not supposed to be done in a positive.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be, I don't think.
Well, that's the way we've been doing it.
Not on both.
It's not easy, believe me.
No, we know.
It's not easy to wrap your head around. This thing's been bouncing around in court for 12 years and we're trying to sum it up in a 20-minute discussion motion.
Yeah.
Does the motion need to be in a positive manner? Does the motion need to be in a positive manner, Mike?
Yeah, I would suggest that you're either going to want to say that the appeal is either denied or allowed. But I mean, I think what Sean's saying is it's denied, but on the grounds that the relief requested has already been afforded, which I think is.
Sufficient?
Which I think is where you're going with it, yeah. You've already done through this exercise, you've already issued an order.
I'm just trying to get the motion straight so we can move forward, that's all.
So.
We have a room full of people that have fallen asleep.
So if you can make a motion to?
So I was withdrawing my prior two motions. I move that we deny, that we, oh, no, I move that we uphold the appeal of the Balinskis, of their order for, to the building inspector, which would mean that a no vote would be to deny the appeal, correct? That's the affirmative and that would therefore be appropriate, correct?
Where's town council?
Right there.
I thought I had it a minute ago, Sean.
I apologize, Fitzpatrick. You know what, I withdraw that and I will be silent. I will not give a motion.
Would it be feasible to just take the list then?
Could I, could you withdraw that?
Oh, I did, I withdraw, I withdraw all my prior motions.
I think it's only, it's almost a matter of semantics, so.
Yeah, I know that, I think I got this, Mike. I think I got it.
Yeah.
So I move to approve the appeal by Mr. Balinski on the, to overturn the denial letter of the building commissioner for the demolition and removal of the constructed dwelling at 103 Shore Road.
Okay.
That sound right?
Yeah, so yes vote means we let them have the, they win the appeal.
Correct.
And no vote means?
And the appeal.
Let's things stay the way they are.
Correct.
And deny the appeal.
And the appeal is what? What's the wording on the appeal?
If we vote yes, we're instructing the building commissioner to issue a second denial letter. If we vote no, then his decision stays intact.
I don't know.
No, you understand.
Ron, it's not easy with.
No, I'm just making sure that you understand what, everybody's getting confused on this now, but it has, it should be done in a positive manner, that's why it gets switched around.
We always do them in a positive manner and that way, everybody knows that a yes vote is to grant it, no matter what the case is, and a no vote is to deny it.
Right.
Deny the.
So if you say yes, you're going with the applicant. If you say no, you're going against the applicant, basically.
And in this case, the applicant is Mr. Balinski?
Represented by Mr. Lane.
All right, I'm still not clear on it, so take the vote, I'm going to abstain.
John, are you all set?
Yes, sir, I'm all set.
I need, we need a second.
Okay.
I second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Holland. And the motion is to approve the appeal made by Mr. Balinski of the, of the building inspector's decision not to issue another, another.
Not to issue another?
Another denial because there's already one in place.
Denial is to tear down the building?
Oh. Well, that's actually in the courts, that's really in the courts.
There's already a standing order in that. What they're looking for is a second one to be done for whatever reason. So if you say yes, then you're granting their appeal. If you say no, then you're denying their appeal.
Right. Is everybody ready to vote?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay.
Ready to vote.
All right. All in favor of granting the appeal? Say aye. None heard? All opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Either by, aye, Sean Holland, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so.
Ronnie?
I'm going to abstain, I still.
Ron Fojt abstained, John?
John, aye.
Mike Fitzpatrick, aye.
Dan Heaney, aye. Okay, so the appeal is denied. And for the record, Mr. Fojt abstained from the vote. That was a tough one to follow, Ron, so don't feel.
After all that, I'm taking a break, I have to recuse myself in the next one.
All right.
I think we go with you now, Mike, unless Dan needs you.
Okay. Dan, just ask Maria to send me the minutes when she starts putting them together and I'll start drafting the decision for you guys to take a look at.
That's where we're going to run into a little trouble, we don't have a minute taker.
Right.
Oh, you don't, okay.
No.
Well, I'll talk to Dan tomorrow just to make sure I have the vote and everything correct.
Yep.
As far as the members and everything.
Okay, you can reach me on my cell tomorrow, Mike.
It's tough on my, it's tough on the cell phone with a speakerphone, so.
Aye.
Okay, yeah, Dan, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
Bye.
Wow.
I'll wait until you announce it, then I'll recuse myself.
Okay, the next agenda item is, is a public hearing for Scott Fontaine and Tina Cantone, case number 2021-0583 Webster Street. And it was advertised in a Telegram and Gazette and posted in the town hall and it read as follows. The town of Douglas zoning board of appeals will be holding a public hearing beginning at 7:00 PM Wednesday, May 5th, 2021, at the Douglas Municipal Center Community Meeting Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. to hear the following application. Scott Fontaine and Tina Cantone are requesting a variance pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 4.1.3, Appendix B, dimensional regulations to construct a 34 by 30 two-car garage with storage space on the side with an eight-foot breezeway to the main house in an RC2 zone district. The proposed side yard setback requirement is 25 feet and 6.92 feet is proposed. The property is located at 83 Webster Street, MAP 199, parcel 16. A copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, for the record, Mr. Fitzpatrick is going to recuse himself on this case. Is the applicant or their representative here?
Yes, we're here.
Oh, okay. All right. So you have the floor if you want to give us a brief description of what your application is about?
We purchased this property in late 2013 and since then, we have grown. And I have a young son and he's getting bigger. Our house is small. His bedroom is a tiny room and as he's growing, he's kind of growing out of it. And now with the times where everybody's working from home, Tina here is now living in our living room, working in an office, so we would like to turn his bedroom into the office and give him our bedroom, which therefore, the new bedroom over the garage will be the master bedroom slash gym workout area.
And the way, and I guess the way our property is laid out, we require a variance to do any type of construction to this degree. We've scaled it back already to try to make it within the zoning area and our driveway's a hardship. We, if we push it forward where we're more within the, almost within the range, I think it was, what, 23?
Yeah.
It comes a steep incline and it would be dangerous for us to go into a garage coming out of the driveway.
Right, so you'd be driving at a crazy rate.
Okay. Anything else?
At the top of it, not, no. Just with growth and it's about it. There's more space, we don't have much of storage in this house either.
Okay. Do any board members have any questions for the applicant?
Is this on a two-acre lot or is this? Is this on a two-acre lot, or is this?
There was a plot plan in our package here.
The application, I think, says this.
Oh, yeah.
9,202 square feet.
Yep, that's a two-acre lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
I have to say, in the cases I've been involved in in the past, we I don't know if we've ever or rarely have we gone less than half the requirement. The requirement's 25. They want to go to just over six. So.
I mean, we got our neighbor. We talked to the neighbor, and we told them all about it. And in the packet, we have a signed letter from the neighbor literally next door that will be seeing this garage, and they have no issue with the situation whatsoever.
Yep, I agree. I did read that.
And it is even only in the corner that it's the six, right? I don't know how the variance laws work, but some of it's 23.
It's the closest point. We have to go by the closest point.
Right.
You know, and my take on it is if everybody in town was allowed to build six feet from the lot line, we'd have to change it to the city of Douglas instead of the town of Douglas. So and it is basically a three-car garage. It's listed as a two, but the size is a three-car garage. I don't know how the other members feel about it, but it's.
I don't I I'd love to give them an opportunity if they wanted to think about it. I'm not sure how they qualify for a variance by the shape of this lot. When I look at this lot, this doesn't look like strangely. It's not a pork chop lot. It's not funny shaped. It's not zigzagged. It doesn't have a small chunk, you know, at the very beginning, and then widens out in the end. It seems to be a relatively rectangular lot from the plan that you submitted. So I'm not sure that we would have the ability to give them a variance on the arguments that they put forth. Unless I'm missing something. I want to miss something, because I don't want to be difficult. I'm reasonably difficult.
Nope. No, I agree. I mean, I if that addition was the size of a normal two-car garage with a breezeway, it would be somewhere in the vicinity of 18 feet away from the lot line, requiring only a variance of seven feet. They're looking for a variance of almost 20 feet. 19 feet. So I'm. Is there anybody in the room that wants to make a comment or has any issue on the case we're currently hearing? There are just so you know, there are a couple options. If the board takes a vote and it is denied, then you would not be able to come in front of the board again for two years. If you wanted to continue the hearing and rethink your proposal, it's sounding to me like you don't have the votes to to get this variance. If you want to reconsider.
Why you feel it's not a it's a rectangular property line? It is kind of odd shaped the way we got it surveyed and the way it was explained to us.
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
I believe that I don't know if you can see it, but this is the plan that was submitted. Do I have the wrong map? That is the plot that you submitted, correct? The plan you submitted?
Yep.
I'm going to say it is. I can't really.
Can't see it.
It is.
I believe that it is.
It is.
It's not it's not it's not an exact rectangle. I see that it junks out jets out a bit, but that is an unusual shape for a lot in the town of Douglas, I don't think. And certainly in terms of lots that we've seen. There might be other arguments that can be made about the lot, which is but at least as proposed at the moment, if the only thing is the shape of the lot, I mean, I don't know that I would vote to say that that's grounds for a variance. Because there's a bunch of different grounds for a variance, which is which is why I don't know if you want us to take a vote today or if you wanted to possibly continue the matter and think about those arguments. But I mean.
Okay, go ahead, John. You have the floor.
I just said I'm just going to talk to the applicant. The way I look at this thing is a two-car garage. It's under, of course, in the addition material on the top. Yeah, I'm looking at the plans now. If you eliminate part of that right side of that building, I projected that you would still be you wouldn't come out to about 12 feet, I believe. Am I right? He's not persisting in this.
No, Mike recused himself.
Okay, yep, that's right, too. I'm sorry. So anyway, I'm just talking to the applicant. I would say, just me, I would probably think about what we just saw, what I just said in regards to the whole right side. If you eliminate that, you'll be out, I think it was over 12 and a half feet instead of the six feet, you know, so want to consider that. So in order to do so, you'd have to postpone this moving for yourself and reconsider the plans that you submitted to us.
I'm sorry, we could not hear a word what she's just said.
Yeah.
It was too ugly.
Okay. For the most part, he doesn't appear to be in favor of you building within six feet of the lot line.
Okay.
I'm just clearly summarizing that, but.
Yeah, sorry. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, John, but apparently it's not going through to the people that are on Zoom.
We can hear bits and pieces, but it kind of breaks up a little bit.
I can repeat it. The two-car garage is there above that. Everything to the right inside. If you could cut that back just to have a two-car garage, that would be like 12 and a half feet away from the property line instead of only six. What I'm saying is you want to maybe rethink your application and the drawings that you submitted. As the chairman has said, if we deny it tonight, you can't come back to us for two years.
Right, yeah, we heard them say the two years before.
Yeah. I'm just suggesting maybe you should rethink the plans that you have.
So in that case, we should just continue it and think about how we should do it otherwise.
Yes.
We could continue the hearing till next month, and if you came back with a revised plan that was more more it wasn't so close to the lot line, I think it sounds like there's a reasonably good chance that it would be approved. But as it's proposed now. One second. Go ahead, Ron.
The lot line. What's on the next lot? It shows a shed. Is that on somebody else's property, right?
Yeah, that's on the neighbor's, yep.
Right. And.
But I actually, I put that up years ago. Nobody lived in the house next to us for like 15 years. It was condemned or something. And I had a plot plan that somebody drew up years ago, and I found markers, and I thought that was my property. So I put a woodshed there. I have since taken that down. But I thought that was on my property at the time until we had it surveyed recently.
Okay. So that shed is not.
That's not there.
That's not there, yeah.
Right.
But is that a where that shed was that's torn down? Oh, this is another family there? Is that where that house was torn down right on 16 or?
No, they rebuilt it.
They rebuilt it?
Yeah, that's the property of the letter that we have in the document from our neighbors.
Okay.
That's their residence.
Okay. What have they? Talked to the neighbors? What do the neighbors think?
Well, there's a letter from one of the neighbors saying that they're okay with it. But, you know.
Neighbors ain't got a problem with that. Ain't got a problem with it.
Well, except it's such a trend for everybody else. And if everybody comes in and wants the same relief, then where? Then we become a city.
That's between good neighbors and bad neighbors, I guess.
Yeah, of course, they may not always be the neighbor.
Yeah.
Neither may the other person may not either, but
Yeah.
in any event. So in order to get the variance, you need to get four votes. And we have four members that are voting, and it appears that you do not have the four votes tonight. But we can bring it to a vote and find out, or you can request a continuance, rethink it, and come back. We're, you know, at least three members have expressed concerns about six feet just being too close to the lot line.
So.
And the planning.
And I agree. I think we're going to request a continuance, but can I ask a question? I mean.
Certainly.
We have two cars now. The intent for this, aside for the bedroom usage and the office that I now require because my office closed and I'm fully remote, we needed storage. We don't have a lot of space for storage, so do you think your recommendation is we just need to do away with that third space completely?
And I'm only going by recent history, or not so much recent, but past history is it's been difficult for people to get a variance if they're looking to be less than half the required distance. If the required distance is 25 and you come in at 12, it appears that there's a reasonably good chance you'd get it. If the required sideline distance is 25 and you come in at six, likelihood is you wouldn't get it. So, I mean, I'm certainly not here to tell you what to do, but I'm just, you know, I.
Doing the continuance, is that mandatory for next month? Or is that can we do two or three months down the road? How does that work?
You could you could ask for a continuance for a couple of months. You'd have to give us a you'd have to come into the office and sign an extension for us to make a decision because we are required to make a decision within so many days of your application. And if you're going to continue for a couple of months, then you need to give us additional time to make the decision. So.
Does this have to repost in the paper and all that as well?
No, if you come back with something that is further from the lot line than what was advertised, it does not have to be re-advertised.
Okay.
So.
Okay, I guess we just have to come in and just figure out how much time we have to get back to you. I mean, we don't want to continue for months, but we also need the time to get with the architect and redraw up the plans and all that, so.
Right. And then we would need a if you were going to move it further from the lot line, we'd just need you to get a revised plot plan because we do refer to the plans and the house plans and the plot plans in every decision to make it easy for the billing commissioner to enforce. He knows what was approved, exactly what was approved, and he can more easily do his job. So we could, well. Ron, just.
Yeah, I just got a question. How critical is the I'm looking at the the 42 by 30 by 30. How critical is that 42-foot dimension? Does that cause a lot of problems to move it a little further away from the property line?
Well, we have a breezeway there because just past that, we have pool doors that go to our pool area.
You have what, please? What do you have there?
We have the breezeway.
Yeah.
The reason for the breezeway is because we have a pool. So we needed direct access to the pool without having to go all the way around the garage to get into it from outside.
Oh. Well, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. So we could give you a continuance until our July meeting if you think you need 60 days to do that.
Do you do you know what the deadline is? I think it was in a couple of weeks, right?
Uh, no.
June meeting?
Let me see. Second. Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it. Actually, the decision date is July 23. But we would still ask you to give us a two-month extension if you're going to extend it for two months because we don't know anything could happen July 23. If we didn't have a meeting because we couldn't get a quorum, things of that nature, so you know, we certainly.
I was hoping to do June, but I just I still don't get. I guess I don't understand how long we have to give the information to you to prepare for the June meeting because it sounds a little different than what we had to all the paperwork we had to do the last time.
Yep.
So we may be able to get with the architect quick enough to get to you. I just I just don't know how much time we have for June.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, should we suggest July then?
Yes, John, that's what we've been talking about is July and.
Yeah, I would ask them if they want to postpone or postpone until a July meeting. So we'll have, you know, six or eight weeks to do this, so.
Yep. And if you could get the information into the office two weeks prior to that July meeting, then it'll be distributed to the members, and we can review it and generate any questions that we may have prior to the meeting.
Okay, that sounds good.
And you said we have to come down and pick up a form for this?
You'd have to grant us a two-month continuance to make the decision. And I don't believe we would need that, but that's just the protocol. If we give you a two-month a one-month extension, you give us a one-month extension. If we give you a two-month extension.
I think the question posed probably is the physicality of that. The building's closed, right?
Right.
How do we do that?
Yeah.
I'm not being apologized.
No, I understand.
Can they fax it? Is that acceptable?
Yeah, Maria has their contact information. I guess she could.
They're emailing.
Yeah. Do you have our administrative person's email? Maria LaJoy?
Maria, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So if you would agree to send her an email just stating that that you'll extend the decision date until September 23, then we could grant you a continuance for two months, and we'll all be good. And I truly don't believe it. I think if you come in with a proposal that's not so close to the lot line, I think it can get resolved at the next meeting that you come to.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
That's what we want. That's what we want to get this done sooner than later.
Understood. Yeah. I mean.
Like I said, I just don't know how quickly you need the information. I don't know what's going on with June. Are you not having a June meeting?
No, no, we're having we're having a June meeting, the first Wednesday in June. If you think that you could be.
How quickly do you need the information for us to be in the June meeting?
We would like it two weeks prior to the meeting. So that would give you approximately two weeks. And all we would need is a new house plan and a new plot plan. Everything else would stay the same.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah, so I think we're good for the June if we can get a continuance till then.
Okay, so you're requesting a continuance till our June meeting, which is the first Wednesday in June. I apologize, I don't have a calendar in front of me.
That's okay.
My move, we continue this hearing until the first meeting in June.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Holland.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Forget to continue this public hearing until our meeting in June, which is the first Wednesday of June. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Neil Adams.
Aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, Sean Holland.
Aye, Sean Holland.
Aye, Ron Forget.
Aye, John Ramada.
Okay, great. So, if you come in with a, I guess, a reduced-sized addition and a new plot plan, we certainly will consider your request at our June meeting.
Mr. Chairman, June meeting on June 2nd.
Oh, that meeting would be June 2nd.
Okay.
Great. Very good. Thank you and.
Thanks.
We'll see you, see you in June.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night. All right, the next agenda item. It's a public hearing for Kurt. And I apologize, I don't know how to pronounce your last name.
Nusel.
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 Nusel, okay. And that is case number 2021-06, 79 North Street. The date of the application is April 14th, 2021. And this was advertised in the Telegram Gazette and also posted in the town hall. And the advertisement read as follows. The Town of Douglas, zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, May 5th, 2021 in the Douglas Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street. Douglas master here the following application. Kurt Nusel is requesting a special permit in a village residential VR zone district pursuant to the Douglas zoning bylaws, section 3.4.3, non-conforming structures, to add a 12-by-16-foot deck with access to the side door of the residence. Existing steps are within 15 feet as would be the deck access on the property located at 29 North Street. Assessors, I'm sorry, 79, thank you. Assessors map 137, parcel 113. A copy of the application may be viewed at the community development department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated.
I brought in some additional photos.
Yeah, I just want to mention something. Yeah, no, that's fine. No, you're not doing anything out. I just want to mention something before we get started. His application says that he's gonna provide 8.1 feet. That's his measurement to the house on this. He hand-drew in the deck. And a deck appears to be less than 8.1 feet. So, if we hear it according to his application, he won't be able to put it where he's planning to.
I look at that one.
To the corner of the house.
Right.
So, he's probably gonna be five feet from the property line.
Mm-hmm.
So, we can't, we can't give, we can't give you less than what's advertised. That's why I'm bringing it up.
I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, the existing step, I think. It's, which, I think.
Show it a little better. That's the existing step.
Oh, no, no, I get, I get all that. But what you're saying on here is you're gonna build the new deck 8.1 feet from the property line. And the corner of your house is 8.1 feet from the property line.
The front?
The front right corner, according to this, is 8.1.
Okay.
But this walkway that you're gonna go to the deck is closer to the lot line than the 8.1.
Okay.
And.
So, if we approve that.
We can't grant something that's closer than what was advertised.
I see.
So, it was advertised at 8.1.
Okay, so.
And there's no measurement here, and we really need one. And that's what the advertisement should have read is.
Okay, so, continuance and get the measurement right?
But what do you do with this? If, if he's less than 8.1 feet, does this need to be re-advertized?
If it's less than what was originally advertised, it does. Yeah.
And I only brought this up because this would have been a big problem for you. If we approved that at 8.1 feet.
Right.
Ken would have went out there and said, well.
You're five feet.
Eight feet from the property line. Now, now you gotta take it down. Now you're in, you're in a problem.
Do you know what that dimension's gonna be? How wide is that walkway that's going?
The existing walkway is just under five feet. It's approximately 4'11".
Yes, it would.
This is the.
Yeah, that platform, that cement.
Right here?
Yeah, the bricks.
Yeah.
Yeah, the picture of it right there. It's a pretty big step.
You got another?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
If you'd hand one down.
So.
That's a photo, a photo from the front, actually, also. That I, you could almost scale it. I drew the lot line on, based on the stakes from the survey.
Yeah, but see, this is what.
No, I understand.
I'll show you, Dan. From the corner of your house to here, if it's eight feet.
Right, so that's probably.
You're like three or four feet from the property line.
So, you're looking to do basically what your neighbor has.
Essentially, yes.
Right. Right. But if, if we, we.
I, I understand, it's.
We can't give you anything closer than what was advertised.
Don't even go to peel it and then you.
I understand.
You'd be dead in the water.
It's my mistake.
And if, that, you said it's about five feet now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And what, what we like to see is an actual certified plot plan that shows the dimension for real on it. Because mistakes happen like this when you hand draw them in because it's not the scale. So, it could appear that it's right, but it's not necessarily.
I went, I believe he showed the step on the plot plan. So, I went literally off of the step.
Right.
And went straight back.
Doesn't, I apologize.
No.
Yeah, go ahead, Sean. I, I will, I will never argue with Mr. Fitzpatrick in terms of details. So, I apologize in advance if I'm mistaken.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
It's just the request that it be less than the 15-foot setback and the public notice that was met, that was issued. So, the public notice doesn't include the eight-foot language or five-foot language or any type of language along those lines? Simply that it be. Am I wrong?
No, on the, on the second page of the application, it says.
No, no, I agree.
No, he's talking about the, so, so he wouldn't have to
I'm just.
Re-advertize it, but he would have to correct this application, no?
Wait, I don't know. That's.
At least you gave us a unique one this time. You trying to outdo the last guy?
I apologize, honestly, it's an oversight. I, uh.
I'm just messing, I'm just messing, don't worry about it.
If I were, like dug steps, if I were to leave the existing and did landscaping steps to the backyard and just did a patio, does that require a special permit?
No, it's part of this, it would become part of the structure.
Because he's already out there.
So, I could just do that.
No, I don't believe so. That would be still, be part of a structure, right? He's talking about the access from his side door to the deck. If that was made out of.
No, you're putting a patio, he's putting a ground-level patio and then.
Dig steps down the slope that you can see in that picture from the backyard.
Just put a patio at ground level.
And build a patio at grade in the backyard.
If the structure is attached to the house, that it needs a building permit? If it's a landscaping set of stairs?
Right, so.
No, so, your answer is no, you don't need one.
Okay, just curious. Maybe I could go in that direction instead if it.
That's, yeah. I mean, in the application, it clearly says 8.1. The advertisement's a little vague.
And I just bring it, because I didn't want him to.
No, you don't want him.
Caught in a pickle with this thing. Will you approve it and then?
Appreciate that.
That guy over there.
I'm sorry.
That guy over there can go over.
Right.
What'd you say, John?
I said it's just a technical error that he made.
Yeah.
From the, yeah, that's all.
Yeah, it's just the way, even though it was, Sean corrected me in the way it was advertised, if anybody viewed the application at the community development as in the advertisement, then they could interpret it as being eight feet out the property line.
Yeah.
So, I, I save some face with that even though Sean tried to get.
Mr. Fitzpatrick, it's never a correction.
All right, so, I don't know if you wanna change your application.
And how does that, would I ask for a continuance from here and revise the application?
Right, right.
Continue it the next month and.
No, no, the board think it needs to be re-advertized. The advertisement should have been more specific.
Yeah, it should have been, yeah. It wasn't advertised properly. I, I wouldn't think that he needs to re-advertize because as Sean clearly pointed out that it's showing that it's gonna be less than the 15-foot setback.
I'm not sure. If I can ask this question, could you give me an idea what the board's disposition might be?
On what? We don't have.
Might be based on the application.
I don't.
Okay.
Nope, based off of your application. You're asking for eight feet? Sorry, Dan.
Yeah.
You're asking for eight feet? And we're clearly less than that. It could be three or four, five feet.
I don't actually have.
You got 8.1 feet.
Oh, yeah, I went by the setback of the house, actually.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, so.
By setback, I, I didn't understand what.
We don't even know what that dimension is. So, we couldn't even grant anything anyways.
You'd have to figure it out. I mean, if you called this guy, this fellow and said, hey, I'm gonna. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, Henry Gass said that step that's up there on that side of the house. He matches his neighbors, of course. But I think he would say that you're out like 5'11".
4'11".
4'11"?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, that issue there is not, nothing to challenge, if you know what I mean? Because you're already out there with that step. So, yeah.
The problem is, John, we don't know what the actual dimension is. So, how do we give a variance on that?
No, exactly, yeah. I didn't see that when I went up to see him. I just was looking what he wanted to do. And we talked about the him coming out and even at the same length coming out, you know, so. And just scoot into the backyard.
Right. So, I think if you just, if you just revise the application, we can hear it next month. But you know what, make, just ask for what you need and don't short yourself because.
I, I understand completely now what, and honestly, it's an honest mistake. When, when by setback, I thought you meant the closest setback on the existing dwelling, not the, what I was.
It would be the, existing setback is great, but then we need the proposed setback.
Of course.
Which would be closer than 8'1". So, I just determine what it's gonna be. And we would like to get a, just have the guy revise your plot plans saying it's gonna be 4'8" or whatever it's gonna be from the lot line.
Literally pull a string between the stakes and measure it.
Well, we, we.
I understand your preference and that will be done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know what, because we've had cases where people did it themselves and then it was, they were off by a bit.
Sure, understood.
And then their variance is no good because they have a variance to be 20 feet away and they're 18.
Now, is this a variance or a special permit?
This is a special permit. But we still need that information. Because you have a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Right.
So, you're expanding it, so you need a variance. I mean, I'm sorry, you need a special permit, not a variance.
No. Again, I'm not sure if I can ask this question. I'll just, nah.
Oh, you can ask.
If next month I bring this in and the board's disposition is such that, yeah, okay, we'll allow this back. How long from that time?
It's 21 days from the date that it's filed with the town clerk.
After the decision.
After, after the meeting.
Okay.
And then we try to get the decisions as quickly as we can to the town clerk. But we have part-time office help. We have a town council that.
It gets typed up, we all need to sign it.
Right.
And then get stamped.
Yeah, we will get it to the town clerk as quickly as possible.
Okay.
And then a 21-day appeal period. And at that time, you know, the permit could be issued.
Looking at next fall or sometime over the summer.
Yeah. I, I mean, ideally, hopefully, we'd be able to do it within 30 days or so after next meeting.
So, that said, I guess I would request a continuance.
Yeah.
And I'll get the, my surveyor to correctly draw the.
Okay, and we would just ask, and again, I don't think we need it. It's just a procedure. If we give you a 30-day continuance, we need to get a 30-day continuance on the decision.
See Marie and.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can do it through email to her. Just say, I grant the board a 30-day continuance on the decision as they gave me a 30-day continuance on the application and everything's good.
Should we ask the building commissioner if he will and answer any questions to help him with the application if he needs?
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure he will. I mean, if you have trouble with any of these things, I'm sure if you see Ken, the billing commissioner.
That one dimension, I mean.
No, I know that.
Yeah, you just wanna make sure because when he goes out, if it's closer than what we granted.
Absolutely, I'll have Richard.
You're back to square one.
I'll have Richard. You know, as a matter of fact, the rear, I sort of took a measurement. It's kind of funny, the, the back of the deck is actually outside the setback. So, when you get back to that corner.
Right.
I'll have Richard draw that on the plot plan and.
That would be great.
Make it all very clear.
All right.
Okay. Okay.
Well, we'll see you next month, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have to vote on his request.
You want to keep these until next time?
We continue to hear June 2nd. I, Sean Hall, move that we continue the hearing until June 2nd.
Second. Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Hall and seconded by Mr. Forget, sorry.
The other old guy.
All in favor of continuing the hearing until our June meeting? Don't laugh.
Hi.
Hi.
I was laughing at the wrong thing there.
Okay, John. Hi, Dan Heaney.
Hi, Sean Hall.
Hi, Ron Forget. Your next call.
Hi, Mike, it's Patrick.
Okay, great.
See you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just didn't want to...
No, that was a good point. That's a good point. All right, then, um...
I'm just going to recuse myself from the advisory.
Okay, not a problem. There was a, something going here for executive session, but we're going to put that off till next month.
Okay.
To discuss some litigation. The next general item is Ray Whitehead, Family Convenience, for a discussion.
I got a question, please, about that last case. Is that going to be re-advertized?
No, it won't be re-advertized.
Or if I want to say anything, I have to come back to the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. First Wednesday in June.
Hello, good afternoon.
Good evening, gentlemen.
If, just for the minute taker, if you and your presenter could identify yourselves as a minute taker, that'd be great.
My name is Ray Whitehead. I own and operate Family Convenience Center at 63 Main Street in Douglas. And this is David Feist from CMG Engineering, who's helping me design a potential expansion of our operation.
Okay.
So we're here with a situation. We have a couple of operational hazards, I would call them, some obstacles in our, in our operation. The first and foremost is public safety. At our facility, we have a Dunkin' Donuts and there's a queuing that occasionally backs up to the street. It holds nine cars. 17 years ago, nine cars were fine. It is not fine now. It is a potential hazard to the, everyone who drives down 16 and we're trying to remedy that. We also don't have enough parking space. We don't have enough dispensed, gas dispensers. We don't have enough cooler space. Essentially, we've outgrown our facility, the growth that we've had over the last 20 years since I've owned it. We've spent the last couple of months looking at an expansion of possibly, I own the houses on either side of the store, tearing one down, expanding to the side. We are right up against a stream, Centerville Brook, and we are therefore subject to riverfront regulations and that generates a whole bunch of issues that kind of render that expansion ineffective. By tearing down the house to the side, right across from the fire, the highway department, we're only going to pick up three parking spaces. I need to pick up 30 parking spaces. We had the restoration of, you know, being riverfront, we, we just render so much of the land having to revert to nature. Again, this expansion just doesn't work. It doesn't solve all of our problems. So we're here to informally ask you folks what you think of what we call Plan B. Plan B is a bit more expensive. I do own 5.3 acres across the street diagonally, next to the fire department at 74 Main Street on the corner of Rydell and Main Street. We'd like to start over. We'd like to fix all of our problems, all the traffic problems, all of everybody's issues that has to do with our site by developing a brand-new gas station, work with every department in the town to make it as safe as we can make it, and we're here because we would need a variance. Right now, this area is a Zone 2 wellhead protection. I've heard it called several things, but the state refers to it as a Zone 2 wellhead, where it recharges the town wells. And there are a lot of regulations with that, both state and town. State regulations are not as cumbersome as the towns. The state merely says that you can't have underground storage tanks, either here or where I am, but I'm grandfathered in. The town regulations say you can't have a gas station, you can't have underground storage tanks, you can't have above-ground storage tanks, again, at both locations. Then again, I'm grandfathered in. So I'm here asking this board to consider, or what we would need to do, to get a zoning variance from that. If I were willing to give up a gas station I can't have, to put in a new one I can't I have 35-year-old steel fiberglass-coated tanks underground 50 feet from a stream. We had an overfill last January and anything that happens there is going right into the stream. Again, my tanks are 35 years old. Massachusetts does not have a time limit on tanks. They have to be tested every year. As long as they pass testing, they're fine. But they're 35-year-old steel tanks underground. What we're proposing over here is to do above-ground tanks. And in the packet I sent you, I sent a couple of pages from the state and from the town bylaws. Disclaimer, these are what I found online. I don't know if they've been modified, superseded, changed. I just wanted to do it to give you the knowledge as best I had it. Again, the state regulations specifically allow above-ground storage tanks. So we don't feel we have any issue with the state for this Zone 2 area if we put above-ground tanks in. Above-ground tanks these days have so much extra security for...
Overfill protections. Secondary containment. It would be basically state-of-the-art brought, this particular facility would be brought up to meet all of the stormwater standards, land use with high potential to load, as well as keep it entirely out of the buffer zone of the river and the wetlands in the area. Whereas the existing site, the biggest hardship is the entire sites in the 100-foot riverfront dome, which under the state range really severely limits anything, even upgrades to existing stations. So as part of this, to basically design the site that would meet the state range, which allow above-ground tanks in an aquifer protection area, because I know under the town bylaw, I guess it's in the aquifer protection area, and in that is where it specifically prohibits gas stations. But again, it's for this lot as well as the one across the street. So by being able to upgrade on this site, we could make a much safer facility, as well as basically meet all the, you know, regulations on the state level.
It'd be safer environmentally with state-of-the-art containment systems, that whatever needs to be done, the best protection we would do. It'd be better for traffic because the Dunkin' Donuts queue, I think it's 14 cars to here, it'd be 20 cars before it hit the street versus nine. Anyone who's familiar with my site, my gas dispensers are very close to the entrances. It's chaos on busy times. This would allow a much better traffic flow onsite and coming in and coming out. I know there's all sorts of theories of where the entrances should be and how they'd be controlled, and we don't have an opinion on exactly. We're showing a concept here. This is pretty similar to somebody else who applied for something similar a couple of years ago that was approved. We're merely showing it, we will work with everybody to place these traffic studies, whatever needs to be done, to everybody's satisfaction for traffic flow. So our big question really is, is this something you can do, allowing this variance? Is this something that makes sense? And what would we need to do to convince you this is better and safer for everybody in town?
What happens with the old one?
Everything comes out of the ground. All the tanks come out, all the lines come out, canopy comes down, it is rendered non-hazardous and there'll be nothing, nothing gas-related left over there.
What's the, what's the plan for the building?
Lease it or sell it, retail space, restaurant, whatever, whoever wants to go in there.
And that's all zone commercial right there, right?
Yes, it is. It's got septic system and everything for restaurants now. I mean, it's, it wouldn't require a lot of work for anything you want it to do there. Also, if I may, the, with the above-ground tanks, we do a little bit bigger tanks and we're thinking about five dispensers instead of two, which would take a lot of congestion out. And this would decrease the amount of truck traffic and deliveries. Currently, we get a delivery every other night. We could spread that out because we'd be able to hold more fuel. The large, little bit larger tanks would also reduce the risk of overfilling, even though there'll be a lot of overfill protection. One of the contributing factors to the spill we had a year ago was that we have to fill our tanks to the top or we won't make it through for two days. And by calling it so close every time, if it doesn't fit, you know, they got to shut it off before it overfills. That, that situation would be eliminated with these larger tanks. And tanks don't just bust open and spill their guts. I mean, it's rarely a tank that leaks. It's usually fittings and pipes and, and it doesn't matter the size of the tank, you know, that's going to drip it or leak it the same. And this way, above ground, we'd have a containment system. Anything spilled from any of that will go into a containment vessel. And we don't have any of that now. It doesn't exist on underground storage tanks.
We don't have an application in front of us that we can act on, but I, I certainly think it's a, a big improvement to go in this direction rather than what you currently have. You know, I don't know what we can do without an application for variance.
Exactly. We just wanted to be informal feedback if, you know, before we present, if, if, you know, did you need the traffic study done before we present? Or, I mean, we'd certainly be subject to traffic study with the planning board or who...
Right.
Whatever board...
Correct.
Did that.
It went on the site plan review, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. Here it's just, can you give us the variance to allow that to happen, I guess, is, is, you know, or any feedback towards that is what we're looking for.
Again, I personally, we don't have an application we can act on, but it appears to...
Although in the gas station, it's very similar to what was proposed.
Similar, yeah, yeah. And I, you know, I don't see anything negative about it at the moment, but obviously, you know, we'd have to...
And as part of the project here too, we would have an attorney assist me provide a formal application to the board for the variance, documenting all the hardships and the specific regs that the variance would be required from, as part of that. But the big, big thing is from a just improvement standpoint, to be able to take something that's sort of existing non-conforming and right in the riverfront, right next to the river, make something that's a lot safer and more conforming in the same area, discontinuing the other use altogether, we're just moving it to this side across the street. We're hopeful it'd make a much better project, long-term for the town.
Our building's 3,000 square feet. We're, right here, we're proposing 7,200. You know, the liquor, we bought a liquor store two years ago. We just need more space for everything.
Mike?
Go ahead, Ron.
What was the, the existing, when you moved out of there, what was your plan for that?
To sell it, lease it, but to remove the gas tanks, remove all the lines, remove the gas canopy, you know, anything related to gas would be removed and the ground restored, and then to either sell or lease the property as commercial, retail, restaurant, not a gas station, not a convenience store, not a liquor store, not an ice cream shop, not a Dunkin' Donuts, but yes.
Yeah.
So, do they, you have current approval for that drive-up window on the existing building?
Us?
Yes.
Yes, correct, that is correct.
So would that remain with the, with the rental building or whatever, or?
I think that was approved for the building, not, it wasn't for Dunkin', but I don't, I don't know how that works.
And just, you're asking for...
I think it goes with property.
For an opinion, but that would be potted at decision-making.
Right.
Because you could potentially have two drive-throughs right across from each other. And that was a problem that came up before.
Right.
When we had the discussion with the previous applicant.
Yeah.
No, I'm just, I'm just...
I, I feel silly standing here. Last time I was here, I was arguing against someone else doing this. Irony...
That's one of the reasons why I brought it up, because it was a problem before and it just should be acknowledged this time, that's all.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, the site plans, we don't have nothing to do with any of that stuff, so we all have our opinions.
The site plan would be through planning board.
I think it'd be a good improvement to the town. It's, it's, would help his business tremendously because a lot of times you just go by it because you can't get an parking lot.
Right.
It looks like he's going to have quite a few more pumps there. Are you just going to have gasoline or you're going to...
I would like to put diesel in also. So we're proposing four tanks, two for regular, one super, one for diesel, and have five dispensers, so 10 nozzles hanging.
Yeah.
With, I don't know, one or two with diesel.
Yeah.
How many parking spaces will you have?
Okay, this is...
Yeah, it's probably around 48.
This is 48. We're not done. That's not enough. I want this to continue all the way across the front also, and I pick up about another So, I, I mean, we've got about six or seven upgrades to this, but it doesn't change the overall concept and flow. And, and we want a big distance between the pumps and these spaces. I, I hate some gas stations where it's so tight, you're, you're fighting with the people at the pumps, and we're not doing that. We're going to give it better space. Currently, our parking's on the side of the building. Everyone's going to walk around. I want nothing but spaces along the front. I just, I just see it as an improvement, environmentally.
Just out of curiosity, you don't have propane in there?
In, I have propane. We probably are for heating the building.
Yeah. No, I just, I looked on the, I didn't see where your...
That hasn't been placed yet.
Yeah.
But I would expect somewhere back here, there'd be a tank and...
Yeah.
I believe the only utility that I'm aware of is just tap water in the road front there, so. In fact, there was some soil testing and other stuff done in the past, and we had better than, it was like less than two minutes per material onsite, and it was a system designed originally for the other projects as well, so.
So...
So we're able, and there's five acres, we actually do have a little extra room too if need be, so thankfully, plenty of room to meet all of the other zoning requirements we need.
So, being in a wellhead area, that you brought up at the beginning, who does that approval?
I would say conservation, but...
No, on the wellhead, you said...
I think it's you. I think the issue is, the zoning bylaws say you can't, restricted uses, and those restricted uses, there's two things, both a gas station is restricted, is prohibited, and the fuel tanks. So, again, both sites. So, I believe, I believe it's this board that would give a variance to the Zone 2 bylaw that restricts the gas station use and the above-ground storage tanks. Basically, because we're giving one up, maybe just going to the state guidelines on this site, you know, we're not asking for the state to do anything. We're within the state...
Yeah, I was just, just curious as to, because you brought the well up and we don't, we don't typically deal with that. I would think that would be water and sewer, maybe? They bought that, the old mobile pipeline to protect the watershed area down there. So, I don't know.
We'll have to do some research on that.
Is that the town council we'd have to check with?
I would think.
Okay.
Yeah, because it is in the zoning overlay district, which is the aquifer protection district.
It looks like a nice plan.
Yeah.
I think it'd be an improvement to the town. Do you have anything to add, John?
Yeah. I think it'd be a great improvement to the town, just because of, you know, I go, I drive by there a lot. And of course during the summertime, and usually first thing in the morning, it's very quick congested. Other than that, I'd like to be, awesome plan for Douglas.
Great, great. Then, so what are our next steps? Do we need to figure out the other board or is that something you do with the town council?
Yeah, we, I mean, if you want to...
We will submit...
Submit something.
Correct.
We would definitely have them review it so that we could get their guidance.
Okay. Okay, then we will make some revisions, we'll file our application and go forward from there.
Okay.
I was just curious if I could...
Go ahead, go ahead, John.
Yes, that telephone pole in the middle of Rydell, that was always the issue.
Yeah, when are you, when are you going to move that, John?
Yeah. Well, if you hit it with your truck, it'll be fine.
My opinion on all of those things, I've, I've been in town 20 years, I, I work with the town, we'll, whatever needs to be done will be done. I've heard building something around it, I've heard removing it. We're here to solve safety problems, not create new ones, so if that needs to be moved, it'll get moved.
Well, I'm just remembering, we got to the last time that the applicant came in, I think that was the only issue we had with him, was removing the telephone pole. If I, you know, and it's been a long time, that's what I remember the most.
Yeah, I mean, that was one issue and, and yes, yes, that, that needs to be resolved. And I think there was something about a drain that needed to be changed and, you know, whatever those things are...
You want to do it right.
We're going to do it, and we're going to do it right. I mean, at the end of the day, it still has to make financial sense. It still has to work.
Right.
If costs go out of control, then, you know...
Well, it comes down to even the river that's behind you. I mean, you, you drive through that drive-through all the time, the water's always running there, so I can understand your concerns regarding that, you know, and the, and the size of your building now, you're a grown man, so.
Yep, okay.
So, the only comment I was going to make before, John, was I would just like to see the plan as close to what you want to do as possible.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because like you said, you want to do some different things. That way, we can give it a fair...
Little things, turn the tanks, but you know...
No, I know that, but you...
But I will, when we do our application, we will have, yeah, as close to final, because we can, I mean...
Yeah, and planning boards and site, site plan review will tweak you around a little bit. I'd just like to represent it fairly close to what you want.
And as much parking as it could provide, because we don't have to tell you how busy you are in the summer.
Exactly.
You know, when, when the wallum opens and whatever, it's...
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're going, I think we can add some spaces here, here, and that whole row and...
Yep.
Okay.
Great.
One minute, Bob has something.
Oh, Bob?
Bob in Eric Economic Development. Ray came before the pre-application tech review committee on the first plan, and we had some suggestions on that. Well, not regulatory, it was just suggested in nature, but I think he should come before us, before the tech review to get some good answers to these questions. We could steer him in the right direction. It's basically before we, folks are planning for it, it's pre-planning to tech review on, on a project this size.
I would like to do that.
Yeah.
And incorporate all of those comments and thoughts into this before we come back And incorporate all of those comments and thoughts into this before we come back to them.
Right, just sitting with the police chief, fire chief, highway superintendent, building inspector, before that, you know, a planning board member, getting input from everybody.
Who, who, can you arrange a tech review?
I, I arrange that.
Okay, if you could please arrange a tech review, that'd be great.
Right, you just let me know when you, well, you already have a conceptual drawing.
Yeah.
So we just have to arrange a meeting.
Okay. We'll get, we'll get it updated too, for that meeting, but, okay. So we'll do that. We'll modify these to incorporate any of those, then we'll come back with an application.
Right.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Sorry to keep you here so long.
No, no.
I think it's a good plan.
Thank you.
It's clean. It will be nice.
Our next agenda item was just some discussion about North Brown. And, um, there was a meeting that was represent, that I represented this board, and the building commissioner held. There was somebody from Water and Sewer, somebody from Fire, somebody from Highway, and we were just trying to get things on track up there for the benefit of the town and the applicant, and-
Where is that?
Uh, North Brown, uh, which is the condos up off of North Street.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
And, uh, the town engineer at one point was, was the, the go-to person for them.
Yeah.
And without a town engineer, uh, can't inherit it. So, you know, and he, and I, I have to say, he did the right thing. Right away, he got somebody from all the departments together, and, um, you know, there was some promises made by the developer, and there was some feedback from many of the departments, and I think overall it went well. Good night, Bob. Overall, it went well, so, uh-
Do you wanna quick up to your daughter?
Yeah, if you would, sure.
So, I was up there Tuesday, yesterday. They haven't moved forward anymore with the road, the center road yet. They're still holding off on that. They're processing all of the loom on the site. They're restacking their piles. They are cleaning up the site up there. I did mention to them, a couple of the, I call them mosquito beds, I give them rainwater cells, I think they call them. I said, they're not draining properly, which is a timeline on draining these. And I said, listen, I wanna, I want these all loomed and finished. I want this stuff done. People don't need to look around listening to like this here. So they're very conducive, and actually, uh, you know, Roy Vicki, he actually said, thank you for the meeting, that he felt it was all, and that both of the kids felt like they were in a better direction on which way to go with what we're looking for. So I, I told him, you know, if you have any questions, comments, concerns, to call, you know, we can bring back to you on it. But they are moving forward with cleaning the place up.
Good. Right. That's good for the people that are already living there. There's some, almost a hundred already living there? No, no, uh, sixty, I guess.
Eight, I think.
Sixty or eighty people living there, so.
Sixty, eighty units.
Yeah. So.
Any update on that water, water line issue that was up there?
Um, it was discussed by the water department and the engineer, Leonard.
Leonard is gonna be supervising, so they're, they're up there on, every two weeks they go up. I told him I want him there every week. When they start doing infrastructure work with the water sewer, water line crossing, all that, I want them there daily. And it comes out of the fifty-three G account for them, but I mean, that's the guidance we have to make sure things are going the right way.
Yeah.
They, have they given a schedule?
They did give a schedule. It was quite vague.
It's vague.
But, but-
It's a start.
It's a start, yeah.
Definitely, it's, it's a more conducive schedule than the first one they presented, where they said they're gonna get in a bigger road. So, there was a lot of guidance put out, like, uh, they had said, I had fire there, water sewer there, and, you know, Chief Vincent said, you know, I'll, I'll give you two hundred feet of gravel road, that's it, you know? And water sewer said, listen, I, I want the line through, and I want gate valves here and here, and I want, you know, I want the system in before you start opening the system to clean. I want it done once. So that meant both sides of the road. With that, I said, I can publish you foundational permits for the first four units, so that they can put another dent. I mean, but as far as construction goes, until they have the first section of the road done, they're not supposed to be building.
It was a, it was a good start.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, I think it's an incentive from the least, clean the place up. And if we can see progress going in a good direction, we can loosen up a little bit.
Yeah.
But until we see it going in the right direction, I just say, you know, keep there. Get the pedal to the metal and make them do what they gotta do.
Yeah.
Thanks for your efforts.
Yeah. Thank you, Ken. So, um-
Thanks, Ken.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
No, he just said thanks.
I just said thanks to Ken.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can't hear you. The only other item we have is the minutes, which has been-
No, no.
Dragged out a bit, and-
That's on discussion. That's on our list of discussions. It's on the agenda somewhere. I think it's like the second or third item.
I don't mind.
That's what all these nice people are sitting here waiting for us. We send them home, they're gonna, uh, try and see-
I don't have anything on the, what Maria gave me.
Right here. It's on the agenda. It's the second item.
This is what Maria gave me, right here. How did it get on there without her talking to me?
I have no idea. But, yeah, here, this is what we got.
Have you seen this, Ron?
On the agenda.
Where did you get this?
It's in my package. And it's on the, on the email too, that she sent, I think. So she probably revised the agenda and she didn't tie it.
Where is it?
So, it's, uh, the second item right there.
What are we talking about now?
On the second item, there's a, uh, uh, it's under discussion, so I guess we're not gonna make any decision on it. Uh, so, it's just a request for clarification for an in-house business in the RA Zone, Seven Hilltop Drive. Did you, did you get anything in your package, John?
No, that's what I'm looking for right now, is, uh, I picked mine up.
Um, actually, actually, I think it was emailed to us.
Yeah.
Hey, John, just, just fair warning that your battery's in the red. So, so if we lose you, there's nothing present. So, let's see.
The only thing I got on here is lock down, was you get any approval on the man, that's all I got on mine. And I'll be honest, once I got a piece, I, I thought I had it all.
Yeah.
Yeah, so did I.
Let me just look.
We can discuss this.
Uh- Where the heck is this thing? When did I see it today? Did I see it? Oh, no. No, we didn't get it. We didn't get a copy of that thing. I, I seen it. We didn't get it sent to us. So, no, we have all, we have-
You have the form? Four gentlemen sitting in the room.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's the, uh, the form that was given to us.
It's on the backside.
Which is the same as this. And there's a letter on the backside of it. Bear with us for a couple of minutes. You want it? You want your back? So, one of us probably should read it so John can understand it.
Sure, please.
Did you hear all that? I just finished. One minute, uh, John.
Sorry, I just hadn't seen this until-
Yeah.
Right now.
Right.
It's not even on my agenda, so.
Yeah.
Where's Hilltop Drive?
Down, go down Southwest Main Street, take a right on High Street, heading towards Webster. It's up there on the right-hand side. Is that correct?
Yeah. That's the, that was like-
Yeah. So, John, what, what we have here is, is, um, the applicant, they, well, he hasn't applied. And the gentleman that came in, is coming in before us, started off as a hobby doing three D printing with himself and three of his boys. Oh, two of his, his young sons, I'm assuming is how many there are.
Yeah, couple.
Um, there's more than one anyways. There's an S on it. He's a, um, background, he's a mechanical engineer. He purchased a commercial-grade, uh, three D printer.
I'm sorry, consumer grade.
Oh, consumer grade. Sorry.
It's important distinction.
Yeah, that's critical with John, because he'll, he'll stay on that. So it's a consumer-grade, uh, machine for doing three D printing?
That's the, the size and scale of it. The machine right here. So I know John probably, I don't know if he can see it, if he's looking on the camera, but that's-
No, he can't see it. So, i- it's a small, little three D printer that, that he has, and what he did is he, he, uh, what do you call those things that you actually made before you put the-
These are what I actually make. They're, they're nightlight covers that-
Yeah.
When you, when you print them, and then pass a light through them, it's a little hard to see in here, but they become the photographic.
Yeah.
And I make these out of all kinds of images. I buy the nightlights, and then I, I put them together.
It's not fun, yeah.
People pay a little bit of money for them.
Yeah. So he has a little, he has a, a little hobby-type business that, um, he makes these little covers for nightlights. And the building inspector gave him, um, he'll have to give us the background information, how he, how this came about. But, um, he's been doing this for, what, about a year, you said?
A little over a year.
Yeah, a little over a year. He's made about a hundred of them. Or sold a hundred of them. He's made about a hundred and fifty units. And he, he came, as I come in, for some sort of business certificate. And, uh, the, uh, building official considered it manufacturing use, not allowed in an RA Zone, Appendix A, Line One, Page Three or Four. Which is that one that we're talking about, doing manufacturing inside the buildings that we had looked at, uh, with that zoning change that we did. So the, so I guess what he's looking for is the determination is that this falls under the manufacturing classification. And can he, can he do this out of his house? So, that, that's a, that's a quick explanation if the, uh, it'll be up to Jim, and, uh, because you're coming in for an opinion, so I wanna make sure that he wants you to speak-
Okay.
Uh, on it. But that, that's just a little brief overlay of what it is, John, so.
All right, what, what street is this on?
Hilltop. Up off, Hilltop, up off of High Street, down the other end of Southwest Main Street, or the old Thompson Road.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, is there customers coming to your house?
No.
Nope.
Are you using some UPS or FedEx and all that?
How do you ship them out?
Uh, US Postal.
You go to the post office?
No, they take them from my mailbox.
Yeah, yeah. So he ships them out with the postal service, they pick it up on their normal delivery? Is that what it is?
That's it.
Yeah.
Wow. I honestly don't have an opinion right now. I just, I'm trying to think of, I mean, the size of this, it can't be very big.
No, 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 the nightlight covers are about four inches square. But the unit that he's using is, uh, it looks to be about the, uh, overall dimension of the speaker that's in our resource room, from what he held up, maybe even a little smaller than that.
Yeah, definitely smaller.
Yeah, a little smaller than that. Yeah. But they're small units, but it comes down to, um, do we consider that a, um-
Manufacturing.
A manufacturing use in an RA Zone, because, uh, hold on one minute, John, can I ask him a question?
Who's that?
Why, the applicant?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, this gentleman. Why are you applying for this?
Because, um, a lot of people that purchase them from me, frankly, don't use electronic payments.
Yeah.
They wanna pay with a check, so I constantly, not constantly, but often receive a written check. And because I have a website and they see the business name, they make it out to the business name. The bank won't let me cash those. Without having an account with a business name, and I need a business certificate to get the account.
Right, because, because you're a DBA, you're not a corporation.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, basically, John, what he needs- He, well, he, the name of his company is Three D Glowlights. Uh, that's a, well, that's the website, so people assume that that's the name of the company. So when they purchase these things, they send them a check. It comes in as Three D Glowlight. Now he has a piece of paper he can't do anything with, because he has no account, and he can't put a business check into a personal account. He can't open up a business account, because he has no business certificate. So he's got a whole bunch of nightlights. So.
Yeah.
So can I, can I speak with him?
Yeah, go right ahead.
So I, I wanted to clarify that, and it states it in my letter, but, um, I think the definition of manufacturing, at least what I see in the bylaw, is, you know, it says, including processing, fabrication, and assembly. Right? So that covers a really wide range of stuff. And I don't wanna get too intent, but I think the intent is that, to keep people from doing industrial manufacturing. On a scale where I have delivery trucks coming in and out, I have customers coming in and out, I have signage, anything like that. This is truly, um, a craft hobby that we're able to offset the, the costs of by, you know, selling some of them. So I liken it to, you know, people doing sewing in their homes and selling quilts, or jewelry assembly, you know? Those types of craft hobbies that they may do out of their home. And, um, full disclosure, this is my first-ever zoning meeting. I've never had to look at a bylaw before. But there's a, there's a section in there called accessory uses for home. That kind of spells out for, um, home occupation, which I understand to be business use in the home. That's kind of spells out a lot of things here that, you know, I meet all of them. It speaks to, um, you know, exterior signs, excessive smoke, or vibrations, or all those things. I mean, my neighbors would never know that this is happening. I don't have plans to go to an industrial scale. It's, um, it's certainly completely fine and normal for people to do three D printing in their home, um, as a hobby. So the difference is that I'm selling some of them.
Ken, did you have any?
The only concern I had with it is, you know, the definition of the manufacturing, and the scale and scope of what he can potentially do if he did have the certificate there. Now, I understand, really get a couple of machines.
Yeah.
But I mean, you know, if, if you're like most ultimate, or your, your hopes, that maybe it could grow into something that maybe you're not running, the gig kids could run, or something like that. So at what point does it not become a home business, it becomes a manufacturing business? And then you've gotta contend with the neighbors and the neighborhood, because now if you're getting increased flow of packages going out, security's coming in, mow machines on tables, even though the table model, you know, where does, I just don't know what the guidance is to where it goes, where it works. When does it have to go into its own building?
I understand, yeah. I do understand that. I think that could be a concern with any type of, and I don't know what's registered for businesses in this domain in the town already, but that could be a concern for anyone. I'm, I'm knitting quilts, now I add machines. Now I add four sewing machines. When does it become, you know, a nuisance, basically, to a residential area? I, I totally understand and appreciate the intent, because I wouldn't want a, you know, a machine shop running next to my house. machine shop running next to my house, um, so I'm trying to, you know, I guess, I don't know, that's why I'm here looking for some guidance here.
Mr. Chairman, if I could...
Go ahead, John.
You know, I'm sitting here thinking, you know, the term manufacturing, that is in fact, that is what you're doing.
Um, I'm...
It's not like, uh, we've approved, as a group, as a zoning board, we approved people who had a hairstylist, uh, haircutting on Dole Street, uh, many years ago, you know, cars coming in and out, but the manufacturing thing is sticking in my head. How big is this going to get, as Ken just said, and what do we do after we say it's okay?
Yeah, I guess I would question to you, what precludes me from... oh, I don't want to get myself in trouble, but...
You don't, no.
If I don't, if I'm not able to get the business license for accounting purposes and banking, what precludes me from doing this as a personal matter, and selling them to my, you know, as income to myself, without a business license?
Nothing.
And at that point, then...
That part of it, I mean, if you decided to say, so apparently you're online, apparently you're so online, you would just write off the check, you put it on the bottom of the check, and then you go to, you know, Jill Smith at the bottom, um, Jill Smith, DBA, um, that public bank would have to, you know what I'm saying?
Well, yeah, so the bank advised me that I needed the business certificate in order to get the account where I could cash checks, because I, you know, I've had them, and I've gone over this a couple times, and they turned me away, so it just creates confusion with the people buying them, you know, the website is 3D Glowlight, um, not everybody's comfortable paying online, or with the credit card, so, you know, they, um, well, some people want to mail me a check.
The banking laws have changed as such that he's extremely accurate on that, I have a lot of different subs that I deal with that run into the same problem, if you're not incorporated, you have to have a business certificate with the town, in order to get a checking account.
It's not any different than having, uh...
It's not necessarily any different, so the business that I had, that I sold, whatever, it was, um, Jay Department Management, and I was always as positive, that way, my business was in the old town, I was working from my house, you know what I'm saying?
How long ago was that?
Uh, well, it's been ten years?
Well, that's what I'm saying, is the banking laws have changed as such that you can't, you can't do any of that anymore, that's the problem that he's running into. The problem, so, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
No, go right ahead.
Um, by definition, I'll agree with John that it's manufacturing, but I also agree with you, that this isn't what we think and envision as manufacturing, as a textile mill or something like that, or something on a large scale. The only trouble I have is the point that you brought up, which I thought before you brought it up, um, how do you keep it so it stays as you're suggesting, as a hobby-type business? Because once you have your business certificate, he has no way of enforcing, hey, you got Amazons coming here forty-seven times a day, and your neighbors are freaking out, and they're like, well, you gave me a business certificate, I can be there.
Well, that's part of my problem, because of...
So, that's... yeah, I'm just trying to explain to this gentleman that...
I want to thank him for his honesty, for the odds of this, because it's just something that, if it was a hobby to you, uh, I don't know, you know, I'll have to investigate with who was the banks and all that, I have people I know in the banks, but as a... I found out, believe you could do that, meaning shut down a guy because he hasn't got a DPA and has a business account, that kind of thing, so...
Not shutting him down, it's opening up a new account.
Right, that's what the banks are doing now, they're making it, trying to avoid money laundering and other things.
Let me just say this, too, because while we've done this, too, it was, sometimes it was Jay Department Management, and I was all deposit-only, too, and I put that check in coming up, number it, you know, so... so, I mean, ten years is a lot, but I don't have an opinion on this, actually, or reaching deeper.
Yes, well, I think...
I can see this confusion, because, I mean, he's not making a million dollars at this, um, could develop to that, but you don't want a residential area, you know, so...
Well, no, I liked the whole idea that he came up with, it gave him something to do with his boys, um, teach him of all business, being responsible, and things like that.
Yeah.
The only, the only concern I have is, how do you prevent it from becoming a full-fledged business in a residential area, because it really wouldn't be fair to your...
I totally understand that, and appreciate the spirit of that.
Yeah.
I don't know how to put, you know, guarantees in place, other than me saying that's not the idea, and if something were to ever happen, where somebody called me and said, hey, I found your website, I want to order tons of these, that'd be great, because now I can go rent a commercial facility, and buy extra machines, and maybe I quit my day job, but I don't think I see that happening, and I don't have, you know, capacity to do it out of my house, but...
Yeah, go ahead, Ron. That's exactly what I was going to say, you know, he's starting out very small, right? Hopefully, he can create something, if it goes his way, I don't have a problem with something that small, I mean, look at all the, um, prime trucks and all that kind of stuff, he's not going to have that now, it's a small, little thing, right? If he gets a chance to make it bigger, and now he's got to have a bigger facility, you wouldn't want it in his home if he met, if he goes and develops all thousands of these things, so, I mean...
But there's a, if it does evolve into that, there's a transition point from one to the next.
Right, yeah.
And that's all we're talking about.
Well, that's his, that's his option, when it gets to that point, he's not going to want to do it out of his house.
He's going to do it as long as he can to keep overhead down.
So, if it...
Well, I mean...
I'm just being real, I'm not...
Yeah, no, you're...
I'm not trying to be a smart guy with you, nothing, it's just...
If it helps at all, you know, in a box this size...
Yeah.
I could receive the material to make, literally this size, three thousand of these. It comes on a roll, it's, you know...
Right, yeah.
Twenty-five grams, um, so even at a scale that would way outpace what I could do at home, at least currently, I understand you said, that you could add machines, I could, but it's very little material, it's, yeah, I understand where you're coming from, so I appreciate it. But I just think, ultimately, you know, manufacturing means really making anything, it doesn't specify the scale of it, and I would just say... You know, anybody in town who might do this kind of craft stuff, cricket machines, hand jewelry assembly, that's manufacturing by that definition?
Yeah.
Um, because you're not taking into account the scale, and I don't think that's the intent, so...
No, and judging by everybody's comments, I don't think anybody's hung up on the manufacturing point, I think what I heard from myself and other people is, what the potential of it could be, and what the impact would...
We're all wishing you well, but we...
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chairman, one more thing, if I could, um, on the gentleman regards to, if it got to a point where he had, you know, a thousand dollars or something like that, he's got to look at his profit, and say, maybe I got to move, well, really, I don't even have to pay the bill for this one, that's the kind of thing that I look at, in a way that, nothing's set in stone, as he's going forward, he's growing, but now that it's where maybe he can rent.
Yeah, so let me give you one other data point that's a real barrier to scalability, is that each one of these on a machine takes eight hours to make, it's a very slow process, and if you go faster, you lose the quality, so I don't. So, scalability right there is, you know, how many machines could you fit, how many could you run a day, you know, what would your power panel, you know, accommodate, you know, so there is some physical limitation there as well in this process.
Yeah. It still comes down to manufacturing, sir.
I understand, yep, yep.
Yeah, but there's a cross, there's a crossing point, too.
So, yeah, so this is a...
This is a small startup thing.
It's a small startup thing, but it's somewhat unique to what other home businesses are that have come in, I think that's where our problem may be. Would this require an actual application for him to get a variance, a use variance for this? Because technically, it is manufactured, just by your own definition of what you do, you make the shades, you buy the lights, you assemble them together, and you went through the definition of manufacturing, you know, it was everything that you said that you did with the light.
There's probably a hundred people in town doing similar things.
Right.
That are not as upfront as he's been.
Right.
You know, yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out how to help you get there, where you need to be.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so he, he doesn't know how to grow that.
I can tell you that if it came to applying for a variance and going through the process that I witnessed earlier, I wouldn't do it, I just, it's, it's not going to be something that's worth it, for the, yeah, I understand it's advertisements, so you have to notify people, I just, it's, it's...
Yeah, well, you say that you want to go through it, but it would be a process, if it wasn't you and it was your neighbor that wanted to do the same thing, you should be afforded the right to be able to come in and voice your concern, you know, this guy, he's got, the mail truck comes up here fourteen times a morning, whatever, just to be fair to your neighbor, that's what this whole process is about, um, on a small scale, I don't see a lot of opposition even from your neighbors, but I don't know, I'm not up there, I don't know, um, what the whole process means, it sounds extremely simple.
Yeah, on the scale, there would be no way they could even know it was happening.
Yeah.
But I understand and respect the concern that...
Yeah.
If I went nuts and violated what we're talking about in this discussion, it could be a different scenario.
Yeah, but if you went out of control, we're putting him into a position to try to figure out, he's a zoning enforcement agent, so, that's why I'm pointing at him, we're putting him into a position to make a determination of, so when does that happen? When, so, to be fair to everybody, your neighbors, yourself, I personally don't have a problem with what you're doing today. But we have to acknowledge the potential of being something else, and I think that it would, if you wanted to do this, it would have to go through a formal process.
Yeah, for sure.
Ron, what's your regular occupation?
I'm a mechanical engineer.
Mechanical engineer?
That's right.
Okay, so, no offense, you have to sell an awful lot of those to make more money.
Yeah, no, at least don't come with health insurance, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd have to sell an awful lot, so...
Well...
That's going to be a few dollars, do this, too, to put an application in.
Yeah, that's, yep.
About time you got all the mailings and stuff.
Yeah, I don't think there's enough meat on that bone for me.
See Amazon, we see FedEx, we see UPS, they're right downtown every day, seven days a week, it's still your neighborhood.
Yep.
But that's, that's a, that's a no-brainer right there, that's going to be, that's going to be all the time, John, you got, how many, how many of those trucks go by my place every day? Right, they go by down my little street. Yeah, they go down where you live. Some people get deliveries every day. You're not going to, you're not going to stop that, and this is, you know, this is in one-tenth of one-hundred-thousand percent.
Yeah. Anyway, I would have to investigate further to make a conscious decision, I guess, um...
Yeah, in all fairness, nobody, none of these guys knew anything that was coming in until now they're trying to digest it at the same time of listening to it.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
As a suggestion, you may, you may want to...
I would probably put on your website, if you're going to make a check, I'll make it up with this guy.
Yeah, so, a big part of my business as well is word of mouth, and frankly...
Yeah.
A lot of senior citizens that don't even go on the website, they will call, physically call me, and, uh, you know, it's, it gets confused, and it's just, it would be a very nice thing if I could have my business set up with the name, so that I can do everything straight that way, but...
Sorry, I can't make a decision, but I just, I feel that it's still manufacturing, and you're still in the neighborhood, so...
Oh, jeez, this is so far from manufacturing, it ain't even funny, jeez.
Is this something we want to...
I don't know if we could table it and take it up?
Table it into next meeting, and...
Yeah, I mean, I hear where he's coming from, and I appreciate him coming in and being honest about it, but I, there's, I'm sure a hundred people doing what, similar to what he's doing, whatever it may be, and not being as straightforward as he's been. You know, there's all kinds of little things, whether it's sewing garments, or all this kind of, other kind of stuff.
So, I guess, and I don't want to dwell too far into the legal side of things, but if we said, you know, it doesn't look good as far as getting the business certificate, so I say, okay, I see the writing on the wall, does that mean I'm not allowed to make them in my house? Or I'm not allowed to sell them? Or what does that mean for what I'm doing? I mean, I can make them for myself, it's a machine you buy from Amazon, or somewhere online, tons of people have them and do it as a hobby, so that's clearly allowed, I think.
You can have a hobby, yeah?
But does that mean I can't sell them, or I just cannot have a business certificate?
We can't guide you, guide you in that.
Okay.
That would, that would come down to the...
That's what town council would have to answer.
Okay. Because my dotted-line conclusion there would be, nobody can make anything in their house and sell it, at that point, and that feels wrong.
Yeah, can't even write a book.
That'd be wrong, I understand your feelings, but again, it's a residential area, so, it's a law they can't write, and we've had these laws for a long time.
Yep, understood, and, um, news for the whole thing, so...
I think the biggest thing is, is the potential and not knowing how to regulate it, I think it's what, the only stumbling block you have, I personally don't have a problem with what you're saying you're doing, I have no idea what you're doing.
Right.
But there's also a potential of it getting much bigger, and then that could be a problem for your neighbors. I don't even know if your neighbors know you're here tonight, so we don't even know how they feel.
No, I'm like everybody, I don't talk to them.
It's just, the chairman didn't even know that you were coming tonight, so, I doubt very much that your neighbors knew that you were coming, so, um, I guess if you're real serious about it, the best thing to do would be to apply for it, no?
I, yeah, I guess, I...
Just to afford everybody the opportunity, you may find that everybody's in faith, or even you invested a few bucks, and you're off and running, you just have to make a bunch more, probably another twenty.
Mr. Chairman, if I could...
Go ahead, John.
If, I mean, if he does fill out an application, I would probably run us by close town council before we, you know, further it, as again, we've approved people going to for hairdresser up on Dole Street, I just, I remember all the ones we've ever did, a small business, this one's kind of tough, so...
Yeah, they had customers...
That's manufacturing, that's a key word, is manufacturing.
They have people coming and going in the beauty parlor and stuff, and I mean, there's people at home that are doing wedding cakes.
Right.
Yeah.
They're manufacturing cakes.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I really don't know what, I don't know what the right thing to do is.
Technically, by definition, it's manufacturing, but it is in no way what I consider manufacturing.
Right, yeah.
No, I wouldn't either.
Yeah.
So, I'm not even hung up on that, I'm just, as to what the impact would be to the neighborhood, and what their feedback would be.
And, I'm just trying to find a way to get over, not to get around anything, but to legalize it, if you know what I mean.
Yep, well, I get the same thought process, but I don't have an answer at the moment, but I don't...
No, that's what I mean, so, if a gentleman wanted to fill out an application, I think that would facilitate us to look into it a little bit deeper, and of course, being contacted town council, and see what he says. We can't go on speculation.
Yeah.
Ken's got a, Ken's got a comment.
I think with, if he filled out an application, I'm just sitting here on the side, filled out an application, at least, perhaps it would give some guidance, if not in this particular one, in the future, as to what that manufacturing is going to denote for a whole business, for home use, you know, what would be allowed, you know... home use. You know, what would be allowed, you know? You know, you're doing lithographs, the next person might be, oh, I'm just doing a steel to make pools. Okay, I'm just rolling up steel for pools or whatever. I'm making cue balls, you know? But what is, what is the guidance? Where, where are we going to be at with that manufacturing?
Yeah, I agree.
Or home hobby manufacturing.
Right. Because the home hobby thing, anybody, like I said, sewing or homemade jewelry, it's all manufacturing, so.
Yeah.
I would be, I would feel more comfortable making a decision knowing the input of the people that it actually affects. And I don't think there, from what he describes, there's no effect. But at the same time, I think they should be afforded the right to...
So, let me just say on that, I know you guys probably want to be done with this.
No, 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 that's fine. You're here, so you do it.
Is that, I, I don't want to speak for those people, but I would venture to guess that any residential homeowner would say, same thing you might say, which is, I'm fine with it because I don't see it or know it. At the point where it becomes a nuisance, then I'm not fine with it. How, what are we going to do then? You know, because this, I'll go back to your point. There's really no way to regulate what I'm saying I'm doing.
So, when you get a decision from us, we can impose conditions to that decision.
Okay.
Right now, you're asking us for an opinion whether or not to allow him to give you a business certificate, sign off on a business certificate with the town clerk, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. We can't, we can't regulate that at all. You're just asking us for an opinion. But when you come in, you fill out an application, we can put up whatever in our decision, we can add our conditions to it. Same as that guy that just came in with this gas station. We do the same thing. We can add conditions to that. So, then that gives the zoning enforcement agent the ability to say, whoa, 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 you're not supposed to have trucks coming in and out of here. You said that you were only going to ship through the UPS on that one delivery. If you start having Amazon come up, UPS, FedEx, all these other companies, he can come up and stop you in your tracks and say, you need to figure out something else. That, that was what would happen now.
Okay, I understand.
I, I think it's more of just an understanding of what you want to do to protect the, the nature of the neighborhood and being able to regulate it. And I think that's, that's probably your best path to get to that point.
Yeah. Now, to ask a question.
Sure you can.
To your point, what's the difference in what he's doing if he has somebody deliver those, what he needs and so forth, or picks them up and sell them? Then, one of my, one of my neighbors, having Amazon drop off stuff at his house three or four times a week, what is the difference?
Because we don't have it in our zoning code, code to regulate purchases. That's your neighbor purchasing stuff and that's how it gets delivered. We have no way of regulating that. What he's, what he's proposing is to run a business. It's the opposite side of it. So, that's the difference between the two. Believe me, if I could get rid of Amazon, I'd be voting for it. They got stuck in my backyard and I don't even get in, you know what I mean? So...
Yeah, it's just...
One thing you got to consider is, can be shipping and the people at Rossiter, well, it's receiving.
Right, yep.
True, I think so.
Yep.
These are two different things. It's, it's a truck picking his stuff up and another truck delivering and, and at my neighbors five or six times a week.
Correct. And then what I had said was, we have no regulation on you purchasing as many things as you want. But we do have...
It's just lack of common sense, lack of common sense.
Okay.
Well, I know, huh?
So, we'll have to put it into bylaws that nobody in town's allowed.
Well, yeah, we got to have a bylaw. Yep, yep, we got to have a bylaw. No, you just, never mind.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we killed this conversation already.
Yeah, I think we did.
Do you have a clear understanding as to what?
I do, I do. It's still up to me to decide whether to put a formal request in.
Absolutely.
I would dig into the legal part of it with, with the banks first, if I were you.
I, I have.
He's not going to go anywhere with that. That's what the rule is, John.
So...
Yeah, that's what the rule is. The bank, the banking world has changed tremendously.
Yeah.
And, and not too near in the future, you probably won't see paper money anymore.
Yeah.
They're trying to get rid of all that.
I wish we could have been more help to you, but I...
No, I appreciate the discussion and your time. I know it's late.
Hopefully, it was, your lights on.
Oh, sorry.
No, hopefully that was helpful. Sorry, we couldn't give you a direct answer.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Please, for your questions.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion to adjourn.
It's all moved.
All right, a motion by Mr. Forger, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick. Adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
John?
Aye. Aye. At 9:50. Aye, Dan Healy?
Well, that's because you kept talking, John.